Good evening, everyone. We'd like to start the meeting. The hour of six o'clock haven't come and gone. We'd like to call the regular order, regular meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Here.
For the record, at 6:06 PM, we do have Alderman Gardner in the meeting. Will everyone please rise for the pleasure allegiance? So tonight, under public comment, I did invite Director Tillman and Dewan Stanley. Wanted to make sure that he introduce himself to the council. So Director Tillman, could you step to the mic?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Dewan, would you like? We just wanted to come and introduce you to our new health inspector, Dewan Stanley. He's been with us about a little over a year now. Some of you may know him and some may not. And so he wanted to just come and introduce himself and reintroduce himself. Thank you.
Just want to say hello to everybody. Just let you all know that I'm out here doing my job every day for you guys to try to make the city safe and healthy as possible, keep everything in compliance. I left everybody a business card at your location with my cellphone number on the back, so please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, any concerns, anything that comes up. Be more than happy to let you guys know what I'm seeing out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Under public comment, is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any matter on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any matter on the agenda? Going once, going twice? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda? If not, we'll move forward on the agenda under approval of minutes. Alderman, you have the minutes as presented to you. Are there any questions or changes on the minutes?
May I?
Yes, Alderman.
I apologize for the late review of the minutes, Madam Clerk, but on the September 26th, you had me listed as the Public Works Chair with no report. Minor correction, it was just Alderman Smith. And then Page 4 stated that I expressed concern regarding rejection of a bid. I just asked for the reason of the rejection. It wasn't a concern, but... And then that was for September 26th. And then on the October 10th, I was absent from the appointment of the Library Board, but I'm listed as a ye vote, so just listed as absent. That was it. Apologies for the late review.
That's all right. Is there a motion, Alderman Navarrete, to amend the minutes as presented?
Yeah, motion to pass Items 5A through D as amended. And I'll submit those changes to you, Madam Clerk.
So move. Or second? Motion made by Alderman Navarrete to amend the minutes as presented, and second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on the minute?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. On the roll call, vote of five, five voting yes, zero voting no, zero vote present. The minutes are approved and passed. Item 6 on the agenda, reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman... Alderman Wilson will be here. Ordinants and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. Real briefly, on October 22nd, we called an ordinance resolutions meeting to discuss two items. The first item was an ordinance amending the elected official salary ordinance. The Alderman present decided to decline any action on said ordinance. The second item on the agenda was a resolution relating to the participation by elected officials in IMRF, that those items are on today's agenda, listed as new business, Item 6 and 7. There was no other things discussed at the meeting, so that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. For the record, we have Alderman Wilson in the meeting at 6:11 PM. Alderman, we are at Item 6, the reports of committees. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Patton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to request, it's kind of my understanding that there is a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning with business license holders, and as the Chair of the Permits and Licensing Committee, I've requested multiple times today for a link for that Zoom meeting, so I'm just asking that city staff would send me that link before the meeting tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Request noted, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Smith is not here. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. The Public Utilities Committee will hold a meeting as soon as it's feasible for the entire committee. What we will be talking about is electric aggregate information that you received in the mail. And also given a report, I'm going to request a report from the Water Department regarding our water. Thank you.
You're welcome, Alderman. We also, I fail to miss Pastor Stokes. So Pastor Stokes, can you please come up to the mic? And we started the meeting, but we'll interject any time for you to pray for the council and the city.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite everyone to our Kynect City Pray Call every Thursday at 7:30 a.m. on Facebook, too. That's my prayer call on Thursday, I'm sorry. It'll be Tuesday at 7:30 a.m. Did I get that right? Well, that's a prayer. I God and I Father, we thank you tonight for this opportunity to be a part of such meaningful work serving people, serving people in this city. We thank you for these leaders in the room tonight. We thank you for Mayor Jones, these Alderman persons. We thank you for all of the public workers who dedicate time to the upbuilding of this city. We pray for a covering over the residents. We pray for prosperity for this city. We pray for the employees of this city who are afflicted in their body, facing various challenges in their health, their family, whatever it may be, you know, tonight, Lord. We ask that you look on them and that you touch them. And we would ask that you continue to shine your face upon Kynect City and bring peace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, I would like to request a executive session for one item. The item will be the compensation of employees and officials. The executive session will be for one matter. We're anticipating possibly another executive session. So is there a motion to go into executive session at 6:14 PM for the purposes of compensation? So move. Motion made by Alderman Tillman. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton for discussion?
Yes. Executive session. Your person has not...
This item is time sensitive, Alderman. We have one person that's here. Just want to move past that one, and then we may go back in. I don't anticipate that one, the one item taking too long, but we want to, the council requested this gentleman to come here, so we want to give him time. All in favor to go into executive session at 6:14 PM? Aye. We will be in executive session briefly. We'll come out and conduct the remainder of the council agenda, but we're in the executive session now. Is there a motion to return back to the regular order business at 7:04 PM? So move. Second. Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. For the record, Alderman Smith was in executive session at 6:25 PM, and Alderman Smith is in the regular meeting for the record at 7:04 PM. Is there a motion to deviate from the regular order business to take up two items? First item would be 11A, a new business item, and then the second item would be to take up 11A and 112. Is there a motion to deviate from the regular order business for those two matters? 11A and 11, 11A1 and 2, Alderman. Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by... Is there a second? Second. Second by Alderman Williams.
You said 11, 1 and 2?
Yes, new business items, 11, 1 and 2, Alderman. All in favor? There's a motion and a second to deviate from the regular order business, not to approve those matters. So we're in deviation to present these two matters to the City Council so we can move on with the regular order business. There was a motion and a second, all in favor for those. We would present Item 111 to the City Council. We would ask Attorney Dominic Lanzito to come up and to discuss Item 111. Before you do, Attorney Lanzito, just like to explain to the council that this matter is a litigation matter, and tonight is a potential agreement to resolve that litigation. And part of what we're here to talk about tonight is the agreement, and I'm sure there will be questions. So Alderman or Attorney Lanzito to present Item 111.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mayor, also, Mr. Abdallah is present. His attorney is not present, so he can answer questions, but we must be mindful that he doesn't have his attorney with him. But if any points of clarification, he'll be more than happy to answer, and has come here to do so. This is the litigation related to 473. We've discussed it multiple occasions over the duration of the lawsuit. This particular case, we've met with Alderman Tillman, Alderman Navarrete, Mr. Shapiro, who is Mr. Abdallah's counsel, Mr. Abdallah, to kind of go over, you know, the project, some of the likes, the dislikes. This is on the corner. And as you can see from the renderings in the existing, this was the old car dealership. There was some concern that this is not a ground-up restoration, this is a rehabilitation. And Mr. Abdallah can confirm, this is brand-new, ground-up, all aspects of the property. And as you can see from the rendering, there's going to be certain steel posts that are going to be removed. There are going to be three state-of-the-art electric car chargers, but everything is brand-new. In exchange, as part of the resolution, the city would adopt a Class S8 resolution for the parcel, which we, the city did on multiple occasions for other business owners. And there would be a sales tax sharing agreement only for the convenience store of a duration of four years or up to $100,000 in conversation with Mr. Abdallah's attorney. He indicated, it's anticipated that the convenience store aspect portion would generate probably $50,000 per year in sales tax. It is not any splitting of the motor fuel tax, which was estimated to be approximately $150,000. So in total, Mayor and City Council, this is revenue that's not currently being derived. You're looking at new sidewalks, curb, gutter, canopy, C-store, everything that's in the picture existing is gone. You're talking new pavement and landscaping in accordance. I know there were some issues with maybe moving the convenience store to the back, but due to the layout with the fuel tanks, it's just not feasible at that particular location. So this is an opportunity to, and the litigation itself relates to the zoning and/or special use, and special use, not and/or, and special use. And this would wrap all of that off. It would cut up, cut off litigation expenses, and the investment in total, and the investment in total, I think he's targeting approximately $2 million, the time has passed, of total investment versus the rehabilitation, which was substantially less. So understanding that, and he'll certify or clarify for the rec, this is all brand-new construction. There's no rehabilitation, there's no attempts to renovate any portions of the foundations or anything else. This is ground-up, brand-new.
I know this sits in the first ward, and Alderman Navarrete has questions. I don't know, Attorney Lanzito, if you're going to answer those questions, or Mr. Abdallah. Just reminder that we are still in active litigation for this matter, so...
With that being said, Mayor, if this is active litigation, why are we not in executive session talking settlement?
Well, uh...
Oh, my turn.
Or... Alderman Tillman, we had discussed general, this on multiple occasions, and this is kind of the culmination of the last set of discussions that we had had. If approved, there'd be an agreement to move forward. So the settlement agreement obviously has to be approved in open session, and this is just the culmination of those items.
Right, but if we asking questions about the settlement, and if we're going to call up the plaintiff, we probably should be in executive session.
If there's anything substance of other thing...
It kind of depends on the questioning, but...
Just I would caution Alderman to...
With the questioning that you may ask in open session.
And that's what I was alluding to. He's not here with his council, but if there's a confirmation that it's all brand-new, anything like that, I mean, they think that's general or general enough that he can confirm and would do so, and that's why he's here. But he would not go in executive session with the City Council and your council.
So should all of the questions be directed to the resolution that's before the council?
If there's questions about the substance of what's in the document that's before you, yes. If there's litigation strategy or renegotiation, that would be an executive session item, Mayor.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. That is not the rendering that I was up to the understanding that this was going to be. What I saw was a new structure facing west that was on the east side of that property.
Right, and that would have the canopy separate from the actual convenience store location. And that's what I was trying to explain earlier, that given the dimensions, that it's really not feasible to shift, have the convenience store outside of the canopy itself. That's what was explained by opposing counsel.
By who?
Opposing counsel. It's just the layout of the lot had have been a little bit bigger, then they would be able to have that kind of configuration. But it will be all brand-new. It's not a refurbished or rehabilitated fuel station and convenience store.
So one of the questions was, if it's all brand-new, then the current shell that's up there now won't be renovated, right? It will be torn down and a new structure?
You may. Everyone, this is Mr. Mohammed Abdallah.
So Mr. Abdallah, that's the current picture. So the council was under impression that that shell that's up there now would not, it'd be torn down, or it'd be new structure built?
Yes, yes, Mayor. It'll be turned down completely. It'll be treated like a vacant land. There's nothing like, the canopy will be, will go away, the building will go away, and it's going to be a new building, a new canopy, a new dispenser, and a new under storage tanks.
So directing everybody to the resolution and agreement that's before the council. Alderman Navarrete, do you have any questions regarding the agreement that's before you?
No, I wouldn't say I have any questions at the moment. There are some new items in here that we're just made aware of today, or I'm sorry, on Tuesday when we received this. In particular, a sales tax sharing agreement. So, and into Alderman Tillman's point, I'm a little leery about, I guess, what questions I ask, considering again that there's, Mr. Abdallah has filed suit against the city, and there's ongoing litigation. Well, there's a suit against the city, I guess, currently, so not really comfortable in understanding of what questions I could ask or not ask, so I would like to prepare those questions and submit them to the council, the attorneys, to make sure it's appropriate to discuss, so that I'm not inappropriately discussing items. But what I will do is review kind of a summary of events and kind of refresh everyone's memory as it's been a year now that this has been going on. As many of the councils aware and residents that are aware, in 2019, you know, we commissioned a two-year-long study for the corridor of Burnham Avenue. We commissioned the Great Cities Institute to commission that study. In December of 2020, the zoning board of appeals recommended that the Burnham Plan be adopted as an appendix to the comprehensive plan, and that a mixed-use overlay be introduced to our zoning code, which had not, at the time, existed. In January of 2021, the City Council approved a mixed-use overlay ordinance based on recommendation number three of the Burnham Plan. In that recommendation, in our quote, "The vacant and city-owned properties surrounding the Sibley intersection present an opportunity for mixed-use development that contains rental housing to attract young professionals seeking close access to the Haglish Southshore Station." The city had since then began purchasing and demolishing properties on that block and nearby that block. One of the key issues that we see at the Burnham Avenue, on Burnham Avenue, with vacant properties is that when business owners are wanting to develop these properties, that there's outstanding back taxes. The way that, to remedy this, the city had been working for some years now to create and understand mechanisms through the South Suburban Land Bank and the Cook County Land Bank, as well as the abandonment process that we've created through our own ordinances so that we can acquire these properties, enter into redevelopment agreements with potential businesses or developers, so that they don't have to worry about those back taxes. As the city acquires these properties, those back taxes are eliminated, and we can promote the development based on the wishes, in this case, of hundreds of residents and years of planning. Again, I've tried to be open to understanding this process. Again, the zoning board of appeals then held a meeting, which was August 3rd of 2023. The City Council was not aware of that meeting. Mr. Abdallah also submitted a letter of intent May of 2023, which the City Council was not made aware of. And then on September 14th, 2023, was, we were asked to rezone this property, to deviate from the wishes of the Burnham Plan and the efforts of the Burnham Plan, to approve an upzoning of the property. So no longer see the property or the area as a mixed-use development, but to see that property as a upzone to B2 and provide a special use permit, if I'm saying that correctly. In the countless efforts, again, of CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency of Planning, the Great Cities Institute at UIC, and the Illinois Planning Association of Illinois, have also done follow-up studies to the Burnham Plan with the recommendations, again, to continue the course of a mixed-use development at this particular area. Those efforts, again, at no point has it ever been recommended by a member of the community or a planner or these planning agencies during these years of planning efforts that a gas station be placed at this location. And as you can see by the existing current condition, it certainly resembles, and used to be some 40 years ago, a gas station. At no point, even though it did look like, as it looks like that was, it never recommended that that's what we put there. And I have yet to see any, I've tried to find positives of what, how I can convey this to my residents in searching for motor fuel tax revenues for similar gas stations in our town. We receive anywhere from $8,000 to $11,000 in motor fuel tax revenues from properties similar. We also, on average, have calls of service, of just under 100 calls for service for our police department a year. And certainly have had an uptick on Sibley and Hirsch in some crime activity, and, you know, looking at this incentive agreement that shows, you know, this property be open until 2 o'clock in the morning, I also don't see how this promotes public health, public safety, public welfare, or the best interests of the city and its residents. Again, I gave an ample opportunity for residents to give me feedback as I discussed this over the past year, as we've been discussing this. And again, I've received zero support from any resident for this development. With that being said, you know, I respectfully would love to work with you, Mr. Abdallah, and very respectful over all this, over this past year. And we'd love to partner with you on a mixed-use development, you know, for this area and help you succeed in that development. We do have funds available through various sources that we can try to work that out, but at this moment, unfortunately, you know, I can't, in good faith, based on the reasons that I've laid out, you know, recommend that we move forward with the gas station at this location. I apologize for that, but again, I thank you for being kind to the process and always willing to talk.
Any other Alderman having questions? If not, if there's a motion to approve the agreement as presented on the agenda? Seeing no motion...
I'll make a motion to table the item to further meet, a future meeting or the next meeting. I didn't get a chance to fully review the agreement within the two days it was sent to us. It's lengthy. My apologies.
So the motion is to table item number 11A, Alderman?
Yes. If you would like me to, I have read it. If you would like me to ask questions I have as it pertains to it, I can certainly do that, or we can read it through together.
I don't need...
Have we been doing this for over a year now?
Assistant's reading it. I just need time.
So for the record, Alderman Tillman made a motion to table the matter for a future meeting. Is there a second to table the matter? Second by Alderman Smith to table the matter. This will require a roll call vote to table the, table item 11A for a future agenda. 11-1.
Quick discussion is, again, just another comment. Well, I don't know if I can ask this question, but is that your final... Well, I don't know if I can ask this question, but is that your final submission? Is that the final submission?
I think the attorney said there's no discussion.
No, that's not the final rendering.
So, Alderman, we'll make sure that you guys talk before, but when there's a motion to table, we would move on with discussion and go to the vote. So, make sure you guys talk before you leave with Alderman Williams. So, there's a motion to table the item to a future agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll? To table it. That's the action tonight.
I have so many questions. Okay, yes.
Yeah, if you have questions, table it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. So, on a roll call vote of four, voting yes to table, three voting no, the matter is tabled till the future agenda. And Attorney Dominic will just ask you to come back for the next meeting before we put it on the future agenda.
That's fine. There's a list of questions. Anyone wants to email me, I can get them answered in advance.
11-2 on the agenda is an ordinance amending the Calumet City Municipal Code, mayoral eligibility. At the last meeting, the council directed the city attorney to make changes to this ordinance, Attorney Sturck or Alderman Tillman, for this ordinance. Are there any items you'd like to add to this, Alderman, I mean Attorney Sturck?
Attorney, the ordinance is amended. Assistant, for the extension.
Okay, so, the ordinance is amended and is presented this evening reflects the change in the state statute regarding the ability of a member of the General Assembly to hold elective office in municipality. So, that statute trumps what's in the city code right now, and this ordinance merely reflects the mandate of the election code.
Alderman Tillman?
Make a motion to pass item 11-2.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman to pass item 11-2. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
No.
No. Wilson? No.
Yes.
Yes.
On motion, three voting no and, I mean, three voting yes and four voting no, the ordinance for the mayoral eligibility fails and it does not pass. So, this doesn't preclude me from running for mayor of Calumet City. As many of you know, state statute passed in 2021 states that no municipality can prevent a city member of the General Assembly from running for office. So, tonight, the city council chose not to uphold the statute, even though changes were made at the city council meeting. So, tonight, that fails, but it has no bearing on either myself or anyone else from running for mayor of Calumet City. We're at 7:29. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 7:29? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second to return to regular order of business? Second by Alderman Patton. So, we are all in favor to return to regular order of business?
All right.
We are back at the regular order of business. We left off on city council reports. City council reports, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick announcement, Saturday, October 26th will be the second ward has invited me to join her as a first and second ward Harvest Festival. Again, it's October 26th, the Saturday, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Commissioners Park. It's Exchange Avenue and Memorial Drive. There'll be vendors, music, games, and food. Please come out and celebrate the fall with us. And then Wednesday, next Wednesday, October 30th, the VFW every month that there is a five Wednesdays in the month have their famous spaghetti dinners. So, again, it's Wednesday, October 30th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the VFW. That's 664 Hirsch, the corner of Hirsch and Polaski, up the street here. Please come out and support the veterans. It's always a great turnout and a good time for all. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Second ward, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. So, again, the first and second ward Harvest Fest will be this Saturday, October 26th, from noon to 3:00 at Commissioners Park. 1,000 Memorial Drive or Exchange and Memorial Drive, right behind Castaway Bowl. We will have food, fun, games, music. Come dress for the weather. This is not a Halloween-themed event. This is a fall festival. So, we will have hot chocolate. Thank you to Alderman Patton for donating pumpkins. And hey, thank you to second ward residence, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Moore, all of you all, Ms. Jefferson, who donated so much candy, Kitty Gibson, thank you so much for making sure that everyone will have something. We will also have a resource giveaway table. So, we will be providing limited supplies while they last of Pampers, coats, clothing. We can re-up on school supplies. By now, I'm sure your children have lost every pencil that you sent them to school with in August, so they will need some pencils. We'll have that out there as well. Thank you to the city clerk, Dr. Inyoda T. Figs, for your support and your donations. We're looking forward to have a good time. Start Saturday with us and then end it with a bang with Calumet Memorial Park District. That is their last haunted house. Please contact CNPD or Commissioner Yvette Tiki Pierce for more information on that. And then on Halloween, we will be supporting the Calumet Memorial Park District's trunk-or-treat at Sandridge Community Center. Should you need me, feel free to contact me by cell or text, 708-586-4990. My email is Monae, M-O-N-E as in Edward, T as in Tom, at AlderwomanWilson.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Third ward Alderman, De'Gon Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just thank Public Works and the Department of Inspection Services. The third ward has, have cleared all of our backlog of calls, and there are currently no pending issues. Public Works and the other employees were answering those issues expeditiously. So, I really want to thank those employees for getting on top of that. The only pending issues that we have in the third ward relates to the replacement of some of the stoplights that were down. So, I just want to let the residents know that we are working with ComEd to get that, those addressed quickly. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth ward Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First and final, I gotta make something as possible. There will be no meeting, no third or fourth ward meeting in November due to the election taking place at Downey Park. The next meeting will be held December 4th, Monday, December 4th, at 6:30 at Downey Park. We'll remind the residents of the trunk-or-treat that will take place October 31st at 4:30 p.m. at Caroline Simpley School. If you plan to participate, please arrive at 4:00 p.m. to decorate your vehicles. And also, lastly, Grand Prairie Services, in collaboration with FEMA, will be back in the neighborhood to offer the resources from the September 17th flood. So, be on the lookout. That date will be in November, it's not yet certain. So, just be aware that that will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth ward Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first thank Thornton Township Prosecutor Cassandra Holbert in conjunction with my office's last week's property tax appeal workshop. I would like to thank our city clerk for her attendance. I would like to thank Alderman Patton for his attendance. And lastly, I would like to thank trustee, I'm sorry, treasurer Jerry Tarka for his attendance. There was a lot of residents that came out, received assistance. Also, thank you, American Legion, for opening your doors up. November the 9th, be on the lookout for flyers going in the mail for the walk, the nature walk. And my office is in conjunction with the Cook County Forest Preserve District, starting at 9:30 that morning to 2:00. It's going to be a three-mile walk. Going to have hot chocolate out there, and I look forward to seeing the residents of the fifth ward. That's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth ward Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last probably week to 10 days, I've received a few calls to my office asking questions about the 2024 sidewalk program. I just wanted to give an update on that. We do have an item on the agenda tonight to award the contract for the sidewalk replacement program. Spoke with our city engineer before the meeting tonight, and he told me that the winning bidder has assured him that by Thanksgiving, we should have no problem getting the sidewalk program done by Thanksgiving. So, just wanted to give that update to, to the residents that have been calling about that. Matt, if you've got anything else you'd like to add to that, I'd yield the rest of my time.
No, Alderman, that is exactly, we did reach out to the lowest responsible bidder and did confirm with them that they would be able to meet the timeframe with which we are aiming to try and get this done, so that way we can have it done before the holidays.
Thank you, Alderman. Seventh ward Alderman Smith?
Yes, just want to let the residents know that the next town hall meeting for the seventh ward will be November the 16th at DA's Banquet Hall, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you have any questions on that, please contact 708-891-8197. Also, want to ask the residents to start submitting any requests that they may have for holiday turkey at this time. Our office is taking those requests now. And keep your, keep reporting your concerns and questions that you have regarding vacant properties and suspicious activity. You can contact A. Smith at CalumetCity.org, or you can contact 708-891-8197. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I have two matters. One is Congresswoman Robin Kelly is inviting all residents to the second congressional district housing expo, which is Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It will be at South Suburban College, which is South Highland, 158th and State Street. I think we have this posted on our website, but if not, we'll make sure we send out to residents. Also, this will be our last meeting before Veterans Day. The city is having an event on November 8th, which will be at the library. We would like to invite all elected officials and residents to it. More information will be coming out soon. And also, we didn't put on the agenda the Halloween hours, which are usually 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, we'd encourage residents to make sure that you follow those Halloween hours. We know that it gets dark early, so we want to encourage parents to not only be safe, but watch out for kids, watch out for your kids, other kids, as they celebrate on October 31st for Halloween. The last item, I just want to thank Ollie Alderman for attending, and clerk, the treasurer, for attending the senior prom that was held recently. The residents who dance, I'm sure, are still recovering, but everyone had a good time. So, we want to make sure that we thank our staff, Maria, we want to thank Christina, thank Val Williams, and thank the entire CED team for putting on a spectacular event for our seniors and making sure that they enjoy themselves. The next item is our item eight information items to be accepted and placed on file. Are there any questions regarding item eight, A through D? If not, can someone make a motion to accept these items and place them on file?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, sec, was it? Alderman Patton, I'm sorry, Alderman. Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
All right.
Next item or item nine items, nine A, nine one through seven? Are there any questions regarding items nine, one through seven?
One comment. On nine, I had nine six, one for the access ordinance. It should be Shirley, Tom, Yates, and Superior's going for it. Surely Yates to be added.
Shirley, Yates, and Superior?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve these items as amended with item six? Do you want to amend item six and then approve it all? Or can someone say the amended motion to add it, Shirley?
As amended.
Motion made by Alderman Patton to amend it, I mean, to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on items nine, one through seven, as amended?
Yes.
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 Item 10 are building permits, one and two. Are there any questions regarding the building permits as presented? If not, is there a motion to approve items 10, one and two?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman. Is there a second by Alderman Smith? Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Item 11, two through seven and 10, we do not have the resolutions for, the families did not send the information for items eight and nine. So, if we can take action on items two through seven?
Two failed.
We took action on two.
I'm sorry, three through seven.
Mayor, I would ask, or I'd like to make a motion to table items six and seven to future special meeting when we discuss the compensation ordinance as well, to have those two items appear at the same meeting with that other ordinance?
Yes, Alderman. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Wilson. The motion is to table items six and seven. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on the item six and seven being tabled?
Wilson? Yes.
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 Yes. And then, Mayor, I'm sorry, one other thing. Item 10, should be Lori Wilcox?
Yes, that was...
And she was, she was the city clerk, right? Clerk of Chicago Heights?
City clerk of Chicago Heights.
Yes.
Well, before we do that, Chief, do you want to come up and talk about Resolution Five, the former chief, Lynn Katalke? Chief Colas, are you back there? Chief Colas, are you back there?
Do we have, is the, uh, resolution here?
It's not here tonight, Chief.
Okay, I will have it for you, and, uh, if you can call me back up in a couple minutes, I'll get it for you here. I got it. All right, here we are. So, uh, Leonard Keltayka, born June 4th of 1938, attended Chicago Vocational High School. Uh, between 1958 and 60, he served in the United States Army. On August 16th of 1972, he began his career with the Calumet City Police Department. He served as a patrol officer, a youth officer, crime prevention officer, and an accident investigator. As a crime prevention officer, uh, Leonard Keltayka made an impact and was known commonly as Officer Friendly. He received recognition from several community groups and was in, was also the recipient of numerous awards. In 1975, he was honored as the Calumet City Officer of the Year, achieved the ranks of sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. Uh, in his supervisory capacity, he served, he supervised a juvenile division, he was a commanding officer of training and crime prevention, the director of administrative services, and the commander of the patrol division. In May of 1993, Leonard Keltayka was promoted to chief of police. During his off time, he enjoyed fishing, playing pool, wo, woodworking, horseback riding, golfing, and snow skiing. In 1995, after 23 years of service, Leonard Keltayka retired from the Calumet City Police Department. And it was with great sadness that we learned that on October 4th, 2024, Lenny Keltayka passed away at the age of 86. So served our city, was, uh, was in the, uh, U.S. military, a really a great guy, everything, uh, I've heard about him. I was not around when he was here, but, uh, nothing but good things, and was commonly referred to in the community as, uh, Officer Friendly. So if we can take a moment of silence for, uh, Lenny Keltayka? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So I would ask the council to pass these resolutions, and then when the family is, uh, present, uh, not only this resolution, but item, uh, 10 as well, uh, when the family is ready, we can have them come before the council and present the Lori Wilcox and, uh, Chief Kaitalka and the other resolutions. So take action on item 3, 4, 5, and 10. Is there a motion to approve items 3, 4, 5, and 10?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton and second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, is roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 12 of financial matters, um, I would ask the council to table item 24. Uh, the attorney is not here tonight. Alderman Gardner, is there a motion to table item 24?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gardner to table item 24, second by Alderman, uh, Williams. All in favor to table item 24?
Aight.
Alderman Gardner has, uh, action on items 12, 1 through 23?
And 25.
27.
27.
27, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alderman, with the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 1 through 27 as so presented. Sorry, 1 through 23, and 25 through 27. Sorry about that. So I would like to make the motion to approve items number 1 through 23, and items 25 to 27.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second? Second. Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
May I, may I, any question?
Yes.
Uh, on item 18, uh, I know this is just a page, um, on the October 10th, um, Alderman Patton and Alderman Tillman requested a legal opinion about an agreement. This is separate from that, correct?
Yes, this is separate from that. This is a.
This is not an agreement, this is just the invoices?
Yes.
So I want to continue just to collect invoices and just not enter into an agreement? Is that the?
This is from the, the current agreement that we are under, Alderman. Uh, I think the legal opinion is coming for what Alderman Patton requested.
Okay. And, I apologize, and what is, again?
It's for the city, uh, messaging system, uh, that goes out to residents.
Okay. Understood. That was all I had. Thank you.
It's not Target Smart Van, right? It's just the city messaging program?
Is that open to all of us?
It's a text blast, basically, so we need to send out, like, our events that we have. Like, they look at, they process, uh, like, they can hear the break, basically.
But it's for the city event, so like, anything we have in our ward, we would be able to text that out?
Can I request that the Harvest, uh, flyer be texted out? Do unfinished business, we'll do it there.
No, will we be able to do that? Text, text out the event that's happening Saturday?
Can you send her the flyer and get all the information, Joel and Ed?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you continue calling the roll on, uh, the items as presented?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Unfinished business, uh, Alderman Smith?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Patton? Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Gardner?
Nothing at this time.
Unfinished business, Alderman Williams?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderwoman Wilson?
Of course. The Second Ward will have our November meeting, the day after the historic election. Um, so we will have our meeting as planned, November 6th, um, at 6:30 P.M. Also, by now, my ward has received some information on news that I, I shared, um, earlier today. If you have any questions regarding that, please contact my office. Um, I'll be up, uh, until 4:00 A.M., so you can, I will accept those late night text messages, uh, 708-586-4990. Again, we did have a great time at the senior prom. I've never seen seniors tear up a dance floor, literally. Literally. It was a beautiful thing, and it was, it's a great, uh, nod to the city of Calumet City. It was beautiful. Uh, Halloween, please be mindful of the doors that you knock on, uh, watch your children. Last Halloween, I saw a lot of babies out there at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night, alone. Please let's not do that. Uh, we don't know who's behind every door, and I know if you ring my doorbell at 9:00 p.m., you're going to get an ugly Alderwoman. So please let's be safe. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. First Ward Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just briefly, I would like to request, uh, an updated, updated report on the CC rap program. I see in the bills that we're continuing the program. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ald.
Thank you, Alderman. There being, uh, no further business to come bef, we don't have executive session, so no further executive session. Uh, so there being no further business to come before the city council. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:54 P.M.?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Wilson, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aight.
Meeting adjourned at 7:54 P.M. Thank you, everyone.